You've got mail.
All right, we have four, we have enough here to officially conduct the business of the city of Douglas. So let's get started. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the city of Douglas and to the mayor in commission. This will serve as our work session for September the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. More consent? I say consent also, so that's the consent. Mistakes. We have one item under our general comments on tonight, Roscoe Allen will be appearing before you to discuss some items. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
How y'all doing, all right?
All right.
First of all, I want to know, I see Preston here from his newspaper. Is it Douglas Enterprise here or who you're from Douglas Enterprise?
There's nobody here that I can see, Mr. Allen.
Well, they need to be here. I want to address them newspaper folks first before I get into my agenda.
Well, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to address it to the newspapers, people like Preston and the Douglas Enterprise. Now, I see that, like the situation happened about Charlie Davis. Now, the newspaper, they are biased toward blacks. The Douglas Enterprise biased and Preston biased toward blacks. The reason why I'm saying this because, now, Charlie said that I grant a commission by McGowan now. I want this for the record and put this in the paper. See, I had a witness, the man McGowan got married me and when I signed on, I got a witness, ran him a commission. He said that Roscoe gonna make me beat his damn ass. So why y'all didn't put that in the paper?
Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, let me say this right.
Let me tell you, Mr. Paul, now.
Whoa, 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 let's make sure we get something straight, Mr. Allen. I'm trying to be very respectful to you. What you addressing is the media. You're not addressing us, that issue is not before us.
Listen, he is the media, Tony.
I'll take the prayer, you can talk to him offline.
No, 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 no.
What is your business before I counsel?
They talking offline again, when he put all that paper about me, Mr. Tony. Come on, man, look, this is business. It's right, you understand?
What I'm saying is...
Like I said, the newspaper is biased toward blacks. Why you taking up on that wrong, big ass wrong?
What is your business before our council?
Listen.
That's what I'm asking, Mr. Allen.
Okay.
Because they have no business, I'm gonna move on with this meeting.
Okay, I, I got two some questions, that's one reason why I want to address this here, you mayor.
Okay, okay, fine.
You said you're a mayor for all the people, right? What people you a mayor for, you tell me? I want to know now, okay? So you always talking about what Mr. Roper said about this and that. When I take out all the deposition from every city commissioner about that reimbursement of our subsidy I put in, that's right. You always, Roper said that it was, that policy would never suspend, never came for him. Now, you always talking about Mr. Roper this. Number two, what reason why you voting against me? Get the forty-two thousand dollars, tell me what reason you vote against me, I don't hear it.
I will respond to you in writing, Mr. Allen.
Well, put it in, okay, I want you to vote, okay?
I'll do it in writing.
Why you can't let the people know?
Mr. uh...
You voted against all the people against me, you did.
Mr. City Attorney?
Huh?
We'll get a list of Mr. Allen's, uh...
No, no, let me finish my question, let me get my question out here, no, we don't get no list of nothing, I'm on the jump. Ain't nobody out of place, you got that? You voted for everybody against me now. Don't tell me not to just vote, we'll put it in the paper. You didn't put it on paper to vote against me, you did, Tony?
Okay.
Did you?
I'm not commenting.
They say yes or no.
I'm not commenting.
See, that's the problem, see?
You already know how I vote.
And number two, I know how you vote, that's right.
All right then.
And you had no reason voting that way.
Okay, let's keep it going.
Because, do you know what I done? When you ran, I ran a sixteen-pound van for you.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I did, just lie, hate your mama.
You found that for Tony Paul.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I put your mama hand in, the whole city's a vote, Tony.
Okay.
Okay, what I didn't do, I know what I done.
Anything else?
Number three, this is the worst administration I ever seen under you run in the city. You know why I say that? They're like running Papa situation, okay? Now, running Papa could have done a dual position, just like you got other folk doing dual position. Some are doing three different positions here. The city could have saved the money. Now, y'all supposed to be what's right and best for the tax bill, saving the money. Now, y'all gave her that jar. At thirty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty. Look, y'all could have saved over half of that really. Running Papa was already on the city payroll, he was already getting the benefits. Now, you tell me, you got, you got people doing three or four deals with dual position here.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
And I'll say that's best issue for the tax bill, where y'all spent that money. That's the fact about that there. It's not that, and yeah, something else too. I want you to listen to this too, y'all, Mr. Paul. Y'all would have been never getting no revenue if I would have put that fifteen-lit subsidy in. Now, y'all getting electricity rate off of it, you getting garbage sanitation rate off of it, you getting... That's right, now, I calculate this, if a person like you that owe that three hundred dollars a month, motherfucker time put that one, it's fifteen revenue over that subsidy. Y'all making money off the subsidy that I put in, then y'all gonna deny me the right to get reimbursement when they got all on their own. That's right, now, I want to say this, if I was a white man, y'all would vote for him, and sit down here and you tell Olivia, "I ain't pregnant," for what you is? You pregnant, Bob, I'm not pregnant, and like McGowan's pregnant, that's right.
All right, that's enough, Mr. Allen.
Well, I know it's enough.
Mr. Allen, please.
But like I told you...
That's it, that's the end of your time.
You would not be the mayor if I could hit you, you got that?
Okay, thank you.
You take that to the bank, bro, I'm gonna check what I say.
Thank you.
You would not be the mayor if I had you.
Let me come in after you.
I mean, what I say.
Let me come out to you because of the fact that while I was out campaigning over the weekend, I had a lady to address me about the statement you just made about this being the worst administration in the past few years. And, and as I've said up here numerous times, it's sad for, for anyone to experience what you experienced. It's sad for anybody to experience what Brandon Paul experienced.
Amen.
And I have been saying over and over and over again, we have a majority-black administration up here, and it seems as though black people have got the shortest end of the stick. So I know Mr. Preston sitting over there smirking is gonna take, is gonna take it back to the community that it's a black-white issue.
It ain't.
You can't say it's a black-white, it's a right-wrong issue, that's what it is. And the bottom line is, it's about what's right.
That's right.
And I have advocated, I have advocated for what is fair and for what is right for the twenty years that I have been sitting here. But you get an administration that picks certain commissioners against other commissioners. Everything I have suggested and brought up, with me being the longest sitting commissioner here, it has been deliberately voted down. Lot of people tell me, say, "Well, when you talk, you sound like you're mad." So I've been praying over this weekend, 'cause I wanted to make sure that when I spoke tonight, it was not perceived as being mad. But the fact of the matter is simply this, there is quite a bit to be angry about and upset about. Because like I've said, when the odds have been against us, we expected, or kind of pretty much expected to be not given a fair chance.
Well...
When we got the upper hand, it was not expected to be treated like we've been treated as black people.
Well, I don't look at...
Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen.
Hold on, let me finish, I ain't through yet.
No, no, Mr. Allen, you had three minutes. I have been more, I have been more...
I don't look at racial issues.
Right.
I told my best friend, a Republican, said, "Oh, you're a..."
Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, your three minutes is up.
Thank you, your best friend of mine.
Thank you.
But I just want to say...
See, that's your problem, see?
I understand that.
That's your problem, see?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Allen, many people have expressed to me what you are expressing, so I can definitely say I know where you're coming from.
Then too...
Mr. Allen?
When these submissions up your life, when you're wrong, and you can't take it, he gonna get mad, you don't even need to sit in committee, you sit in the house and watch it on TV, what you need to do. Right or right, I will talk about that every time something, this ain't right, I'm gonna make it right.
I understand.
And I'm gonna be right, my come on.
Any other comments?
You got that?
Uh, I think it's all for now.
You got that?
Mr. Moore, you have any comments? Ms. McNair? Mr. Taylor?
Okay, none.
Any updates?
None.
All right, that will conclude our work session, we'll do it in forty-five minutes. Thank you.
Charlie, what's the status of, uh, I am pouring the work session to discuss restitution calling for election and tax allocation. 'Cause I asked you all to put me the information when you all had the town, town meeting at the, the weird center or either the gym about the tax allocation issue, I never got it.
Uh, wait. This is the last part, you know, the House has to pass it, the Senate has to pass it, the governor has to sign off on it. That gives us all the nation petition, put it on the ballot for voters to vote on it. And this is just a process of where you ask the county election chairman to put it on the ballot to be voted on.
Okay, okay. Who counted that meeting, Georgia, which department counted that meeting?
Oklahoma City County, school more than anyone.
Yeah, but I was told I'll get a handout, do you know who has some more presentation?
I mean, I don't know about a handout, it was a presentation, maybe it was always...
You ready, hold it, Mr. Mayor, Proton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore?
You ready?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the city of Douglas, mayor and commissioner meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting, it's September the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. And this has the next thing on the agenda, staff comments. No staff comments?
I don't have any, man.
Next is on the agenda is the mayor and commissioners' comments. Mr. Moore said he doesn't have any. Commissioner Peterson, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I do have a couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, I'd like to expound on Mr. Roscoe Allen, who came before us at the work session. And I'd just like to say that, you know, I can understand Mr. Allen's passion. I understand, you know, where he's coming from. He mentioned a couple of items, he mentioned one where he didn't get reimbursed for developing optimum subdivision, which is a subdivision behind where I live. There was, there was a incentive program in place, and we can't find documentation that says it was actually done away with. And he feels that he is entitled to go approximately forty-something thousand dollars. So I can understand his passion, and I thank him for coming forward, letting us know, you know, his concerns. He also mentioned the issue with Mr. Brandon Paul. I haven't met the young lady who was hired after Mr. Paul, since Mr. Paul left, I haven't met the young lady yet. That is my department, I will try to get with Ms. Henderson, so I can meet the young lady. I wasn't aware of what she was making, I don't know if Mr. Paul was making that amount or not, but anyway. I'd just like to say that I can definitely understand his concerns. And as I've said before, well, before I said what I've said before, I want to say that this past weekend, we had a mediator here in Douglas, Georgia, Minister Denise Freeman. She attended one of our city council meetings before. And she, she works with the Board of Education on board in Lincoln County, and she does mediator. And she came forward to try to get some issues resolved in our community, because she seen where Douglas now has posted things about various persons. She saw where Douglas now posted about, and, or whatever said about, "I was, I was unopposed in the election," and then all of a sudden, after he posted that, the next day or so, it was, somebody went and qualified to do a write-in, passed the qualifying date. So it seems as though Douglas now is manipulating and controlling districts one, two, and three. And it's sad, he's expressed more concern about districts one, two, and three than he has about four, five, and six. And, and it's just, it's really sad that sometimes you have people who allow other people to manipulate them and think for them. So I just, I'd just like to say to the citizens of Douglas, be very, very careful, I'm saying that again. Be very, very careful who you choose to vote for, learn to think for yourself, don't allow anybody else to think for you or manipulate you, or tell you if somebody needs to be opposed or not. You know a person if they've been doing a good job in your community or not. Think for yourself and stop being manipulated and stop being a puppet. And also, I'd like to also speak on very briefly the incident about the, of at the shopping center, not shopping center, but Little Mike's Restaurant. Mr. Michael Clark got in touch with me and told me that that's his property, and that his daughter does not own that, and she had no reason to tell the police department that I could not come up there. But some of my constituents asked me about that, so that's why I want to talk on that. If you read the paper, you'll see that there were, there were no threats made, there were, there were no assaults made. The lady stated that we argued, I did even consider it an argument, I considered it a discussion. We had a discussion on a couple of items, and we disagreed on those items. And, but no cursing, no threatening, none of that. But she called me that Sunday morning and she said to me, "Ms. Olivia, I'm sorry that I had to involve the police with that." She said, "'Cause it really was not warranted." She say, "I overreacted." So, but to, to the citizens of District Three, I just let you know, I did not give a comment to the newspaper. The newspaper did not contact me, Robert Preston contacted me. But it seems like he's always trying to contact me when there's something negative going, going on. He's never contacted me when there's something positive, when I've gotten the highest award to be awarded to an elected official. He's never contacted me when I was honored as a, in, in Florida for, for that award. So I, I didn't respond to him, but the newspaper did not give me an opportunity to respond. And I'm not sure if I would have responded to them either, because of the fact that I wanted to say what I had to say while sitting here in this seat where I represent all the people of District Three. I think that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
You're welcome.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, in reality, of some of the things that have went on, to thank God that he bypassed COVID-19 again. With the hurricane that was going on all over between South Carolina, Florida, the Bahamas and all. Thank God we didn't have to experience none of that. Want to give thanks to the Red Cross for what they did as far as get prepared, to set up for the ones that had to evaporate from their homes and things. Mr. Neil Smith, I think I've got that name right, for the great job that they done to prepare for the people if they had to come, you know. Also, the event downtown, although I went to the football game, but after I came from the football game, me and my sister dropped by, and I mean, somebody had it going on, they had it going on downtown. It was a great, great turnout, you know. Last but least, I just want to thank the employees of the city of Douglas for doing what y'all do for the city of Douglas, because without you all, we wouldn't be the city that we are now. And from Commissioner Taylor, I just want to say thank you, thank you for what you all do to make us look the way we look. And I say thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Proton?
Good evening. Also, I echo Mr. Taylor's words that, you know, we sure got the bullet. Again, very thankful that we didn't have any negative effect from the storm. And I hope that we're all keeping the people of the Bahamas in our thoughts and prayers. The devastation is very hard to comprehend. In nineteen ninety-two, if y'all recall, there was a category five that hit homestead down in South Florida. And I had a chance to go down there and help clean up, and it was... After seeing all that back then, I knew it was gonna be bad when I heard the news reports about the hurricane, and it's, it's that bad. So I hope that everybody's taking the opportunity to get online and make some donations, get with your, you know, the charitable organization that you think would be able to meet the needs, and let's get some, do what we can. Unfortunately, you know, it's gonna be very hard for anybody to get over there due to the island location, but we can send our money and certainly our prayers. I want to, well, also want to thank all those who got organized and did the Gopher Taurus Festival in talking to some of the businesses downtown. I know that we had a, it accomplished one of the things, which was to help bring people together and bring them downtown to get around some of our local businesses and enjoy themselves, and I think that was accomplished. Even with having the, you know, the big football game Friday night, the business, some of those were really busy on Friday. So congratulations to everyone who made that a success. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners and the mayor for the work that, that we've been able to do and accomplish here. I know that there are times that we may disagree, but I know that I respect everyone's position. And, you know, even Ms. Peterson, sometimes, you know, we don't always agree on some of the issues, but I certainly respect the passion that she brings to the, to this job. You know, I think we all, in each, each of us in our own way, we have that drive. And I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish and what we're continuing to work on. You know, everybody's got diverse experiences and points of view, you know. But when we bring those together, we're able to talk about that, and because of our differences, we're able to get more information about different things, and it helps us, I think, make better choices on what we ultimately do. So I'm thankful for all y'all, I'm also thankful for the, for our employees. They also bring that same, that same thing, drive to the table, and their unique experiences as well. And when we put it together and move forward for the citizens of Douglas, we accomplish great things. And I'm looking forward to continue to do so. I'll let Commissioner McNeil talk more about this, but we are planning on having a chat and chew for worst four and five. And we like to, we'll get more details out there to y'all about this, but I want to encourage everybody out there to get informed about the issues that affect our community. And one of the things that I get a lot of questions about right now, and we've talked about it again tonight, is this tax allocation district idea. I sense a lot of excitement. Seems like every person that brings it up to me that I'll talk to about it, is really excited about the idea of having a Chick-fil-A in the city of Douglas. You know, that's a very popular franchise, popular restaurant, I think they've been voted the number-one fast food restaurant in several surveys. So I think that's a neat opportunity that we have, and remember that will be coming up to a vote. And if you have any questions, please contact us, please contact the CD. We've got people that can answer your questions, they're posting information on the website, so, you know, no need to be, you know, have questions unanswered. And we look forward to getting out there and having discussions on these topics. Another thing that was brought up, please, now's the time, as we get up for the election, people have been having questions about, you know, well, you know, "Who's my representative, where do I live?" Go to the city of Douglas website, you can look at the ward maps, they're posted, we have six of them, six wards, you know, in the city limits, and you can see exactly where, based on where you live, who represents you. And you'll be able to contact that person and decide what you want to do as things, you know, with these issues, and get your questions answered, but that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner McNair?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also say thank you to the staff of the Salvation Army and to the volunteers. I was able to visit with them on several occasions, and we had volunteers here from several states. And I was so impressed with this people who take time out of their busy schedules, who come and who donate their time. It was, it was just a great effort. There were a lot of unknowns, and I, and I know a lot of people felt like things were sort of drug out and maybe went on for, you know, a longer period of time, but, but thank heavens, we were prepared for the worst and experienced the best in my community, so we were thankful. Again, like Mike says, we want to give to our churches, to our charitable organizations, to help the people we can, anywhere we can. But on a lighter note, I think the Trojans did a great job Friday night, Mayor, and I'm proud of your Trojans, our Trojans. Went to that game, my family and I, and we also attended First Friday, the First Friday. You know, there was so much going on downtown this weekend with the festival, we had the Chambers-Gopher Taurus Festival. And so we had to space it out, we had something Friday night, or Friday afternoon, Friday night, and Saturday morning. And Saturday morning was a, was a great, I think I very well attended, a lot of folks from out of town drew a good crowd. And so we'll look for that to be a hit again next year. I'm gonna say, you know, as I visit with and talk to people, not only in my ward, but people from all over the community, I get a lot of feedback, an awful lot of feedback, and a lot of questions, you know, "How do y'all do what you do? Why do you do what you do?" You know, it's almost like a volunteer effort. And a lot of these folks, you know, they stress to me that they may not enjoy the drama part of it or the, the, some of the inflection of passion in some regards. Some of us like to do things more so behind the scenes, as far as the city commissioner, we like to get things done, and we like to work together with staff, commuting staff on what they do, and building them up instead of trying to tear things apart. But, you know, the people in the community, I think, want to hear from those of us who have solutions, and those of us that are willing to work behind the scenes. And, you know, we appreciate our cameras, and we realize, you know, we're in a different age and times than the commissioner might have been years ago, when everyone first started. You know, to have two or three cameras in your face can be intimidating, but I'm the same person on and off camera. I don't, I don't, you know, I'm a little quieter probably than most up here and a little more shy, but I want to say thank you, and thank you to the staff, that y'all make this job a lot easier than some might say. But Commissioner Gallon's right, and he and I are gonna be doing something called a chat and chew. I think we're two and three, y'all's together, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, they went together and did theirs, so we're gonna do ours together too. I hope for a good turnout there, the city will be getting invitations out, we'll be coming up with a date for that real soon. And what we want to do, Mike and I talked about this, what we want to recruit and encourage, you've all heard of the junk free days, okay, we've got that going, it's looking good, people ask about it, they participate in it. We also want some neighborhood cleanup days. I want to see some days when, when neighborhoods are getting together and going around in a circle of five or six houses. Find the elderly person in your neighborhood, help them out, mow their grass, do something. And we want to, I want to build a campaign of some sort where we catch people doing good things for their neighbors. Visiting with them, they say, you know, it's so easy to find fault when people move off and leave junk or leave things. Let's help one time, just one time, clean it up and, and show people that that's not what we want in our neighborhoods and that's not what we're gonna accept and tolerate. But, Mayor, I just want to say thank you for all you do and for encouraging us and for, you know, the good stuff that we are getting done up here. So I think folks can appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I said we're gonna try to get out here by seven-thirty, I'm gonna try to do it in five minutes. One of the things that I've been thinking about over the last few days is, "When it counts." Had a Vietnam vet tell me something a long time ago. When it don't count, it's pretty easy. It's pretty easy, you can go out there and kick a field goal all day in practice, kick a field goal all day in practice. But when the game's on the line and it's fifty-five yards away, when it counts, how do you feel then? And so many times, when it counts, people tend... And so many times, when it counts, uh, people tend to shy away from those challenges. And, right now, we're thinking about the, uh, tax allocation. The City of Douglas, this is when it counts. This is when it counts. Going to the polls and expressing how you feel about the opportunity to have a Chick-fil-A, a Marshall's, a Cookout, a Starbucks, and a Hobby Lobby, all going on at the same time. This is when it counts. This is when it counts. So, we have to get out, we have to support this, and give us the best opportunity to grow our retail market. Now, the citizens of Douglas is gonna tell the mayor and commission what they're going to say. Yay or nay? It still has to go before the Board of Education, and it also has to go before the county commission. And they have to vote to say yay or nay. Uh, at conclusion that we'll form a TAD committee or a board that actually, uh, serves, excuse me, as a liaison as far as the funds and stuff like that. I'm excited about that. When it counts, the City of Douglas, make sure that we're there. The next thing is, I wanna talk about the hurricane. Because again, when it counts, the City of Douglas is there. They are there for individuals that are in our county, that live in mobile home parks, that want to have a sense of security. Red Cross allows us to open up the shelter. But what I wanna talk to you about is out there at the Emergency Operations Center. When I first became the mayor, I mean, it'd be a handful of people in that room. Over the years, we've had the opportunity to grow that base. Now it's just not law enforcement or the county and the city staff there. Now you have members from the religious community, civic organizations, uh, industries, business owners, the EDA, the Chamber of Commerce, everybody getting that fresh information at the same time. So they can go out and make informed decisions about, hey, we need to keep the building open or keep the business open or not. And, when it counts, I was talking to some individuals over at the shelter. And they said, you know, we used to have a big debate about where we're going when we get evacuated. Say, the last couple years that we've been evacuated, there's no discussion. We know that we're going to Douglas, Georgia. We know that the hospitality there doesn't compare to any other shelter that we've been in. So, that goes to the leadership of this community. That goes to us, uh, let, erasing the boundaries, uh, and letting the civic organizations come in and prepare the food, serve the food, uh, putting up cots, doing all that. It takes a Herculean effort to keep that open. I'm not gonna sit here and try to name individual organizations or individuals that do this. When it counts, when it counts, Coffey County is there. We are there, and we are unified. And that's the only way that, when it counts, it can be successful. Um, Friday night, my mighty Trojans took the field. Had the opportunity to have a field pass down there. Woo, I was excited one minute, and man, that guy ran that touchdown by, oh, Lord. I said, "Lord, it's gonna be a long night." But them young men say, "Mayor, we got you." Trophy's not going anywhere. I was like, "Lord, that's Goldwood say, "Seem, seem," that's what that's Goldwood say. So, it was a hard, hard fought battle. And when it counts, the young man from Ware County broke on us. And there was a Coffey High Trojan out there, that summoned him that says, "When it counts, I'm not gonna quit." And he ran that young man down, and I think he tackled him at the one-yard line. The one-yard line. Our defense went out there and said, "When it counts, you can't have that yard." Fans were up yelling and screaming, the mayor was over there praying and hoping that God was a Trojan fan. Goes, "Woo, it was, it was tight over there, it was tight, I'm telling you." And when we held, oh, man, I had absolute jubilation. Because, I had ran so much and dumped it down the sidelines, I felt like I had about seventeen tackles, three interceptions. It was rough on me. I'm glad I'm only on the sideline one game. And, the sweetest thing was, it was awful quiet in my office today. Nobody wanna talk about that football game. So, I wanna say this right here. The City of Douglas called me crazy. It's okay. I believe in you. You have convinced me that this is a great city. You have convinced me that this is a great community. You have convinced me that our law enforcement, the sheriff, our civic organizations, our churches, our industries, our businesses, when it counts, we stand together. And that's where we need to be. My last comment is this right here. We all have a choice in life. We all have a choice in life. To do of good, or to do of evil. We have this Bible that says, "In the end, it is our belief that good is gonna triumph the evils of the world." As I've said before, in order for evil to prevail, it's for good men to do nothing. The City of Douglas, when it counts, the good men have stood up. Coupled with those good women, those good children. This is a great community. It's an honor and a privilege to serve here. So, with that being said, go Trojans. Love those guys, that's three straight. At this time, I entertain a motion, and we can get up out of here. It's been motion to say, all in favor? Ah, good deal. Let's get out of here.
Mayor, I know you couldn't do it in five minutes. You did, you did good, though.
All right. Don't have time to thank you.